Thank you for coming to the Port Thomas Planning Commission. We're going to start our public hearing this evening and we need to have a proof.
Hold on one second. I know Dennis had a problem last night.
All right, just a second.
We're trying to get it recorded. Dennis had a problem last night.
Yeah, didn't have to go down and restart his computer.
I think to check on that. Yeah, give it a sec. Let me call Dennis real quick because it last, I didn't think about it, but last night it didn't work right away. Do you want to try the other one? See if that happens to, what does it go to red or how do you know that it's on?
Yeah, it'll flip to red.
Okay, see if that.
Give us just a couple of minutes while we're trying to work on the recording system. So as I said previously, thank you for coming to the Port Thomas Planning Commission this evening. It's February 19th. On the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a subdivision of the lots, a map amendment for resuming the homes on Pearson Street. The address is 3591319 and 23. I'm taking place of Dan Peller, the secretary this evening who was unable to attend. I'm just going to read the posting. I, Dan Peller, Secretary of Port Thomas Planning Commission hereby certify the attached is a true copy of the notice of public hearing to be held on Wednesday, February 19th, 2025, 6:30 PM, Port Thomas City Building, Port Thomas, Kentucky. Considered the subdivision of lots and a zoning map amendment for the homes on Pearson Street. As I mentioned previously, addresses 3591319 and 23 from R1C to R1TC1 as well as the dissolution of the Pearson Street Homeowners Association. The notice was posted as required by KRS. With that, I'll open up our discussion this evening with Mr. Kevin Margu.
Thank you. So you have in front of you the proposed plan. We had a lot of discussions leading up to this, what to get on there and how to get it on there. And we've actually, there was some timelines where between vacations and whatnot that there was a few things that we found that are still not quite perfect. So I'm going to ask for ultimately, y'all can have a seat a few minutes if you'd like and we'll call on you. I don't want you to, we'll call on them. So, I'm sorry. We had a few corrections that I'm going to ask you to add to your motion. We were going back and forth with the surveyor and he was trying to get these items on there. So I guess to go through a list of a few things. Tim was actually on vacation too. He got us a list of a couple minor amendments to the historical content. We talked about that or the historical covenant. We wanted to make sure we had some references on this plat for, you know, maintaining the historical elements. And he suggested a couple additional items that I have here. Additionally, I wanted to get your opinion. I think this could be done either way, but didn't know if you all had a preference. The lot that's going to be deeded to the city. Didn't know if you thought that that should be some land hooks on that to the rest of the park or it is a compliant lot because it's off of Lockwood. Lockwood is a right of way that it could be a compliant lot, the triangular area in the back adjacent to Lockwood. You know, I was personally thinking the land hooks on there and I think that's what I conveyed to the surveyor and I see that they didn't get on there. But technically it would be compliant the way it is. I personally like it attached to the entire park. That way it's not this small lot sitting there that in some point in the future could be mistakenly sold or developed or something. It would take a little more of an undertaking to, I guess, you know, you'd have to deliberately create a lot line and deliberately re-subdivide it to create a lot there. So I would, my suggestion would be to create a land hook on that line that makes it contiguous with the rest of the park. Couple other things, you know, for now we have preliminary on here. Just, we have a lot of steps to go through after this process. Since this is a zone change, council ultimately has to approve this through two readings. And this is a little bit unique in the fact that the houses per the new zone are not compliant. And will ultimately, once they get approval through council, will ultimately have to go to the board of adjustment. So this is going to be a little bit of a process. If we do gain approval tonight, we've got to go to council, have two readings of council. If they put their blessing on it, then we've got to go to the board of adjustment, get their approval and then come back and get a signature from the chairman. So it is, it is going to drag out here for several months, you know, if the approval does go through.
What would the variance, what would the variance be for a side yard setback or?
So we would have to positively determine that. One thing that you'll notice on the plat is we asked the surveyor to put the dimensions on there. And I think if I'm not mistaken, there is some side and rear yards associated with the first three lots. I think those are the ones that are most impactful. There may be some front yard variances for the others in there. I think the main three are the first three lots. But we would, you know, positively determine that and create that, you know, that meeting content for that approval to make sure it's compliant. A couple of other things of note that I wanted to bring to your attention that were, you know, a little bit of oddities that actually, you know, Dave mentioned a couple to me. The, some of the references aren't quite right. We found some deep looking pages that didn't seem right. There was a reference, I think there was a cut and paste. There was a reference to, I think Cincinnati Bell, which is, you know, I think Altifiber now. There was a, and some other references, minor references in the utility easements. So we do have a utility easement there noted for the water mains and the other utilities. And once again, I apologize for some of these not being cleaned up. It was, once again, some timeframes there that, vacations and whatnot, that we couldn't quite get everything just the way we want them. Additionally, you'll notice the, the back of the right of way line adjacent to the front of the homes is staggered. And those are staggered for the water meters. We want to, you know, typically you have the water meters out in the right of ways and those are recessed to collect up or catch all the water meters associated with the houses is why that recess is in that curved line at the front of the houses. In speaking, we did consult with, a little bit on this with our engineers and they had recommended, I thought it was a good idea as far as creating, you know, the right of way in front of this parcel, to have a consistent right of way at least on one side of the right of way. So there wasn't a lot of room there with the tower being in place to put in a full 40 or 50 foot right of way. So what we did was kind of create half of a right of way there, like a 25 foot right of way on, for essentially one half. So we could have a consistent straight line. You know, the one most adjacent to the tower says new south right of way line. And then to the north, it's obviously irregular because of the irregular nature of the front lot lines. Those are the comments that I had it, had. Like I said, you know, if we get ultimately to a point of emotion, I would like to, you know, go over some of those intricate, you know, details that I would like added to the motion for ultimate approval if we get that part. Be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I've got, yeah, I've got a couple of questions for you. Over on the right side of the middle, it says there's a 30 foot ingress and egress to be granted, but it's not defined other than 30 feet. Do you know how that's planned on being defined? It hits the last house there. It's right above the last house, 30 foot ingress easement to be granted. It seems like it should be defined a little better than just, I mean, it seems kind of nebulous like that.
Take out, take out to be granted? Is that what you're, are you suggesting take out, remove the words to be granted?
No, I think we should have lines or something to show where that, where that egress is.
Okay, I mean, I see.
It says, yeah, right here, 30 foot ingress.
Right, I see that.
And are those pavement lines or is that the easement? And it just kind of disappears here. That pavement line stays there and there's not a pavement.
So finish the line on the inside.
If that's what those lines are.
I think it is, I think it is. I think that is, but we can positively define that?
I guess that was, that was one of my questions as well. I mean, or is that, oh, the house was serviced from the alley?
Yes. They have an access to.
For like trash collection or anything else or?
They definitely get, I think trash collection is actually, if I'm not mistaken, up front, but they do have access and there's a vehicular access to get to the rear.
So is that a common access of all the lots that can use that?
Yes.
That alley? So people could park back there?
It's my understanding. Now, I guess we can ask them to speak, but that's my understanding.
It looks like the pavement ends at that first house or something that's just.
Oh, so there is.
Yeah, it's not really well defined.
Well, I can see it here now.
That was my first question. When you were talking about land hooks on that back lot, the triangular lot?
Right.
We have down at the bottom of the plat, there's a new south right of way for Pearson. And then there's an intermediate property line. And then there's a property line that's actually the front of lots. It seems like that there should be a land hook on that intermediate line. But we've created this, this really skinny, like five to 10 foot long lot between, the city owns all of it, but if we don't put that land hook in there, then we've created a lot that's non-conforming. And it just seems like it'd be better to put a land hook in there also.
No, actually I think we had, when I initially gave that to the, to the surveyor, if I'm not mistaken, I did have those land hooks, like I said, on the back lot lines and I think I did have it on that as well. So I think that might've been an oversight on their part, but I think that's an easy, easy fix. I would agree with you.
And on that intermediate lot line, there are three curves in there that aren't really defined. They give an arc and an angle, but there should be a couple more points showing where they begin and end. And again, I might have to point that out to you too. But at the end of every line segment or at the beginning and end of a curve, there should be a point defined. So we got a curve right there and there, we need a little more curve data there. We've got a curve right into here that, there's an arc and a radius, but usually have cord lengths and some more information there. And then the same thing on this curve there, there's no.
Curve data?
Yeah, curve data on there.
I guess, Kevin, I wasn't sure what that whole point of that intermediate line was in the first place.
I mean, that's the existing, existing line.
But if you're dedicating your right of way, can't you just?
Remove it?
Make the lot lines the end of the right of way?
I mean, that's what we're, that's what it's proposed. We are making the line, the line adjacent to the, most closest to the building, that is the, is the proposed line.
So that's what I'm saying. So what's the point of the intermediate line?
The fact that it was there prior and we're, I mean, I guess we could simply, I mean, can you simply remove?
Like you said, you're creating a lot that doesn't really.
Can we simply remove that? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean, it defines a little better if you put land hooks on it. It used to be there and now it's not there.
Okay. I mean, I like the idea of personally referencing it. And maybe it's a dashed line or some other, something a little bit different. But I like the idea of it being referenced, that it was formerly a lot line personally.
Yeah.
Kevin, I have a technical question for you and Tim. So for this to happen, there's HOA currently. What are the dissolution requirements of that HOA? What does it say about the number of people that have to vote on that? Is it unanimous? Is it 50% majority?
So we already received that from the ownership. I think everybody signed the application with the intent to come before this board and to move forward. So I think everybody's on board there. The dissolution, there is some, the council ultimately has to approve the dissolution as part of, I would assume, and that's more technical than maybe me, is I don't know if there has to be a separate motion to dissolve the HOA and then to approve this zone change. I would assume that there's probably a couple of motions associated with that at the council level.
I think you could bundle it all together. It was either two thirds or three quarters. I can't remember. It's set out in their declarations. City made it clear though, that we weren't real interested in moving forward unless it was unanimous.
Was it unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
But the planning commission had no purview over the dissolution of the HOA.
There is a statement in the upper left and upper right corners talking, that requires an owner's signature. So does that need to be six signatures or a representative of the HOA or what actually is? There's an owner certification in the upper right that says owner sort of signature and a date. And then there's also a dedication certificate in the upper left that has a single space for an owner. And it looks like they have six owners.
I agree.
And then I just had a general question. Does the city want that big triangular piece of land in the back?
We, we.
Why would the HOA want to get rid of it?
Well, we did talk about that and I think the idea is that since there is, we're trying to define these lots now or creating individual lots, you know, they really didn't have the need or desire to extend those down there. And actually it might've been at the request of the city. I know that the city is okay with it and have, are conscious, aware of it. And I, that was, I think, an agreement between that and maybe the HOA.
That's just woods, isn't it?
Yeah. I think some trails might eke into that just a little bit possibly.
I think that's all I saw.
Does anybody else have questions before we open it up?
I have a quick question. On the ingress egress, and I apologize, is there a language in there? What's going to, who's going to own that asphalt behind their homes, right? If there is. And who's responsible to actually, you know, at some point it's going to need to be rehabbed, fixed, repaired or whatnot. Who's, who's responsible for that? And how is that in this deed that each owner, you know, is responsible for one-sixth of that repair price or by foot or whatever, you know, in the future? So, you know, or what's preventing someone to basically say, I don't want asphalt in my backyard? You can ingress and egress all you want, I'm putting grass back there. So my question is, you know, is that? And then another question would be like, why, you know, it was there for a purpose in the past and it makes sense now with this new construction? I mean, I'm sure it was there for some reason, you know, historically, does that still make sense? Or, you know, with the homeowner saying, well, we'd rather have that property behind our house. I don't know.
I'd love to hear a little bit from the pub, from them as far as what their thoughts are on that. My, I would agree with you as far as the notation and the deed, as far as the maintenance commitment there, but maybe we can find out as far as the extent of what is, how it's used and then maybe we can go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, if any of the audience would like to make a comment or have any questions, if you could, would you come to the podium, just please like state your name and your address? And I guess one question I have for all of you before we get started. Have you seen this plat? Has anyone seen this plat? There was not a way to share it on screen.
You were supposed to be given the final. We've seen a preliminary.
This is still the preliminary. Yeah, we can, we'll pass the copy down. No, keep yours. We've got some. Yeah, we just literally just got this and we're working on, we've been working on this with, with the surveyor over the last several days.
I've been in touch with Tim.
Well, I guess just the question we just most recently had was, you know, for the alley in the rear. I guess what is your all's intent for the, for that alley? I mean, do you, do you need it? Do you want it? Do you want to maintain it? Do you want to share it? Ingress, egress? Just a question.
My understanding, and only our president here can add.
And if you could just introduce yourself if you require.
Oh, sorry. My name is Melanie Powers, 13 Pearson. I've been working with Matt on this for over two years. With Tim and then with Bill Wilson, William Wilson, who's attorney, is going to file the documents once this is all through. So historically, that alley behind us is part of the HOA property. There was no individual ownership anywhere. It was all common ground. And we had to leave it that way because of the easements for utilities primarily, but also the water district. So in discussions with Matt going forward from the very beginning, we knew that we would have to keep that because of the easements. So no one can put fences back there or build another structure because of the easements from utilities in Northern Kentucky Water District.
Does the asphalt stop at that first house?
No. Well, it continues, but it's all.
All broken.
Grass is growing in it now.
It's all broken up and stuff?
There's no intention to maintain it, right?
I'm sorry?
No intention to improve it, maintain it? That's always been my understanding, correct?
Yeah, we just, we know it's there and we can't do anything with it and yeah.
Does anybody drive back there with a vehicle or a trailer maybe sometimes or?
Sometimes and we've never had any problems. If somebody's going to get a delivery, for instance, when my washing machine and dryer came, I just notified people and, you know, we don't, no one parks back there anyway. So it's never been a problem. Duke's back there sometimes. They come for trees.
If that's, if that's the case, it seems to me we probably should have some sort of reference in there to the easement itself. I don't know if you all agree to that, but it seems like just.
So it's only 30 feet long? That's all we're talking about right here? It seems like it's just on that first property then?
Well, it goes all the way through, but it's all broken up.
I think it's 30 feet wide. 30 feet wide.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. So what you're saying, it goes all the way back?
Yeah.
So.
I guess, I don't know what the term of the sanitary easement is, but typically they're not, you wouldn't have to keep the alley back there for the sanitation district.
Right, right.
So you could remove all that pavement if you wanted to.
You would own that lane. They would own it, correct?
There's no, I mean, you wouldn't be responsible for that.
I don't think anyone wants to.
No, I'm just saying, you know. And I would think that the sanitary easement, that comes with its own ingress, that's part of the easement for the sanitation district.
So in, in other words, Duke or Northern Kentucky Water District, either both?
They can access, they can access already independent of that 30 feet.
Are they then responsible to maintain that?
They're not responsible to maintain it, only if they damage it while they're doing maintenance or whatever, but, but they don't, they're not responsible to maintain it. They just have access.
And the real key here is I think understanding, and I know Matt has talked about this, once the HOA is dissolved, you no longer can have the common property. You will all own your respective pieces of property. And this gentleman's agreement you've kind of referenced is just that. And if Lot 9 wants to have a delivery back there and suddenly a new owner in Lot 13 decides no, then that's tough luck.
Because in theory, owner 13 could put a fence all the way back because he owns that property, correct?
No, you couldn't take it all the way back because you have to keep that open because of the easement.
I agree with that, but they could, they certainly could charge them with trespass.
Yeah, I agree.
The bottom line is, and I know Matt's talked about this because I was with him when he referenced it, the, when you divide these properties up, you just need to understand that if you, if someone suddenly wants to walk back on this road and you're on 13 and 13 says, I don't want you back here, that, that's trespassing. They need to get off that property. What you're referencing is really just a gentleman's agreement or a lady's agreement. And, and as soon as an incorrigible neighbor moves in, that's one of the issues. And that's one of the things we've talked about.
Well, unless you define an ingress egress easement.
Saying what they're going to do here, it will be granted.
Another question, what is Duke, what's back there for Duke?
There's an overhead aerial line through there.
Okay.
I'm Louis Lynn. I live at 3 Pearson here. And yeah, that's a continuous alley back there. They really, you know, hit and miss as far as the asphalt. Duke goes back there and also the cable companies, Altifiber and those. So they, they come back there with their trucks. There's no refuge service or anything like that. And, and those electrical lines back there, there's really no other way of doing it but coming down that alley.
Well, but I think what they're talking about is a difference between a private easement that would allow all of you to have that access. I mean, the sanitary sewer easement or the existing utility easements, those are there. Those don't go away no matter what. So they have a right to get in there. But like what Tim was mentioning is, you know, your ability at 3 to come back there from across all your neighbor's yards.
How often does Duke go back there?
I've been there a year. I've seen him there a couple of times.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's any different to any other person's backyard that doesn't have access.
It's no different. I don't get, understand what this.
We're talking about two different things though. One is a utility easement that gives them a right and the other is access for the members. I don't care, I mean, but.
Mr. Schneider, so in situations where there's an alley like that throughout?
You mean like a public alley?
In any con, how is, how is that handled?
Those are typically public streets alleys. Now, if, if everyone back there wants to have a private easement that's, that in order to the benefit of everybody there, you can have Bill Williamson work on that. I'm happy to meet with him and talk about it. I don't think there's any heartburn, heartburn from anybody, either on staff or on planning commission about that, but I'm just saying that needs to be dealt with.
Yeah, we're just asking what you guys would like, I guess. We don't, I don't think we have a strong preference one way or the other.
Based on this, this scale of this, there's a 10 foot overhead electric easement and a 10 foot sanitary sewer easement. Just looking at those, a 30 foot ingress and egress easement is going to take up about the entire backyard.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, the whole, yeah. And that, if that's a private easement that you have between each other, that just allows you to go over their property to have a new refrigerator put in the basement or something like that. It's not for the public's use. But if it were a public dedicated alley, then the public could use it.
Exactly, right.
But I'm thinking this is, but it's not, it doesn't tell us that. It just says it's an easement to be granted. So we don't know what that means. And it's not really.
So how, how would we do that?
I would suggest now that I know Bill's working with you all, that's great. I'll reach out to him and, and do you know, does every, does every neighbor, are they on the main, the same page as, as far as making this a private easement where you all could go back and forth?
Everybody's here but one person, but do you want to say anything?
Two houses aren't here.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I'm Bill Lynn. Yeah, I live on the street there too. Yeah, I would just add to the conversation. It definitely has a function, very functional. purpose to those of us who live there. You have a new hot water heater, which, you know, DuPont just put in for me a while back. We've all had major deliveries. We've got to keep that. It's in everybody's interest. Nobody's going to put a pickleball court blocking or something more formidable than that. We all need, we all need access. Exactly. But the hot water heater was mine. We've all had utility deliveries and also Duke's back there. Duke's got to come back and cut the trees. You know, the, the sanitation, they've been, they were there several times. We all concur that it's got to be kept open. We all respect it. How to put it into legal language? I, you know, I defer to legal opinion on that, but nobody's going to block that or they're going to have a big, just, you know, a major problem with the, with the neighbors.
Well, I think you do, Bill, you, you deal with it upfront like you guys are doing. I'll reach out to, to the other Bill.
Yeah, yeah, whatever language, but I, I, I think we're all in agreement, right? That, that we definitely want to keep it open and yeah, there's a lot of activity back there. There's tons of, there's a lot of activity. All the water lines come up to the tower through there. That's, you know, in that extra lot behind, you know, behind the road back there. So yeah, there's just a lot of maintenance needs to go on. So that, that roadway needs, needs to stay clear.
Hey, Tim, I have another question. I'm so sorry. So, because I understand what you're saying, but so if I bought house number five or even house number nine, let's go there. I bought it myself after y'all did this and I want to put a big shed back there.
There's, there's limitations in the historical covenants that we have.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, there's limitations in that regard.
Yeah, you should run with the land and it should say something that if you're going to have that easement back there, that no one's allowed to put anything over it.
Correct.
Okay, it's also important to remember that all of the homes, even without the HOA's covenants, CCRs, is under the Tower Park Historic Overlay. And so even just with that, you could not just build an addition, a shed, because it would not be approved because of the overlay. So that, that's there. It stays there. Whether, you know, if you bought my house for me.
It's, it's still.
Yeah, I, I guess one thing to understand is that, you know, as these are subdivided out into the individual lots, the individual property owners are going to be responsible for their piece of the alley. There's no requirement that you maintain the alley, but nobody's going to fix it for you. So if you want to take it, you know, if you had some, one of the property owners want to go back there with the dozer and take all that, take all that concrete out of there and plant grass, you could do that. But, you know, with the egress easement, somebody could drive over your lawn. So you just, you need to recognize there is an inherent, you're inheriting the alley essentially. And moving forward, somebody's either going to take care of it or not.
And that can be spelled out in the easement document itself. You know, now, but once it's spelled out, if you fall on hard times, it's still your responsibility, so.
So that's something to think about.
Do you all feel that we should have a reference on the plot? I, I mean, I personally think we should. I think you need to find it geographically and what exactly that egress easement is.
Can I ask another question? Since you guys, you developed this, right? This is what you, this was all y'all's idea for the size of this and layout.
Right, right. And, and every person has unanimously voted?
Sure.
Actually more than once. And then we also submitted to Kevin Perger's request, each property owner signed and notarized a document.
Application, essentially.
So, yeah, I guess. So did you ever think of maybe changing the size of your lots to make them smaller to fit within, so the alleys on the outside?
That was never presented to us as necessary. We all agree we just go straight back.
Okay, just, just a question.
I don't know if it's here or, or there on there, but you know, being in the park, we get a lot of, a lot of traffic, a lot of foot traffic back in there. And we've always, we have a sign in back there, some private drive or private areas back there as well. Yeah, so I, I guess. I can see, you know, kids trashing through the, through that area and all that everything on there. That would not be a good thing.
Do you all, I mean, do you all have any questions for us or for the city staff at this point?
Well, since I've been working on this for over two years, I was, and we were all kind of under the impression this was, you know, we're at the eleventh hour here and we, I understand it's complicated. I understand that from the very beginning, it's a complicated thing and the rezoning. But I think we want to make sure that we are at the home stretch and is there anything else that's going to come up? So we don't get any more big surprises.
Yeah, I think you're in the home stretch. I, we're just trying to make, make sure that we're meeting your needs and the needs of the city. I guess one other question I had, and this isn't a big deal, but it's kind of, kind of relates to the alley discussion too, is there's that walkway that goes between Lot nine and Lot thirteen, goes to the back there? I didn't know what the purpose of that walk was necessarily or who's responsible for, who's going to be responsible? Is there a requirement that that's going to be maintained or can that come out or?
Bill, I wasn't living there. That they put, the HOA put that in right before I moved in. I, my understanding it was done to make it easy for people to put garbage in recycling bins up to the sidewalk. Bill, do you have any?
Yeah, I know, one of the occupants there, Melanie in, in your house there, because that's where the walk is, she decided she, there were a couple of fruit trees there. Yeah, and I, I think it was with the intention of making, getting the trash can, because the trash pickup's in the front of the house and it's a bit of a hill and, I mean, it is helpful, right? I mean, you're still doing that, so that's why there's that walkway. It's in good, it's in pretty good shape. But, you know, the walkways are, you know, okay. They were replaced some time ago.
That lot line's right in the middle of it.
That's what I, that's what I said.
It would be homeowner's responsibility, half one, half the other.
So half the sidewalks and one lot, half the sidewalks.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I shoveled it, I shoveled it today and the last time it was shoveled, it was my neighbor's and that's just us. I know somebody come in, but.
Well, it's going forward. He's going to maintain it. That's what the issue's going to be.
Yeah, basically.
Right. I mean, I suppose if, it makes no difference to me whether I have half of it, all of it, or none of that sidewalk. So we could talk with Tim Ryan, the surveyor, and have him draw that line. However, that would ease that situation. I personally, as the homeowner, will agree with any, anything of that.
It just could be a conflict going forward if you don't let a neighbor next door and then.
If one neighbor tears out half the sidewalk, it'd be a foot wide sidewalk and it's kind of like, it's kind of flat.
So that would have to be an easement or, or something dedicated on it as well.
And just leave it just that way if nobody cares and if it's maintained, great. If not.
Then that's.
Not a problem. Or even the lot line over a couple of feet.
Yeah, remove the lot line, correct.
I, I just didn't know if there was a specific purpose for it. That's, that's all.
Can I ask another question? Because I, I know the area, I'm sorry, but I know the area somewhat well, but not, not like you do. As far as parking, what is, you know, how does this change parking for you all? I, I think you park in front of your home. There's that Pearson Street that you can park there, right? So.
Parking is an interesting issue now that the wonderful new kids area, you know, was finished. We have a lot of parking and sometimes it makes no sense to me because of being retired, I'm home and especially when it's not freezing, I'm out in the yard and stuff and on my porch. People will come up and park at the tower end, you know, up, up at that part of the cul-de-sac. When there's lots of parking down, that's closer to the playground and then they have to navigate crossing Douglas and stuff. And I have thought to myself about talking to Kevin Matt, City Council, about maybe some signage to help direct people. But that's a recent thing. In the past, we've always just parked in front of our homes or across to the city public parking. But now that it's a public street, we don't have any reserved parking. And we did clarify that with Matt. He came to one of our HOA meetings this past summer. And he clarified that we will no longer have reserved parking.
Can I ask a question, Kevin and Tim? Is it possible to, where, where that preliminary on the south side where it looks like there's parking? Is it possible to dizzy any of that up to make that their personal parking area?
I think Matt was, if I'm not mistaken, Matt was pretty adamant that if we move forward with this, that it's public space and public parking. I think even Matt was pretty adamant about that, if I'm not mistaken. So it, it's one of those that, it, it, you know, there's some give and take with this whole issue and I think that was one of those that, from the city's perspective, if I'm not mistaken, that, listen, this is what you're going to have to deal with. And, and I would say that generally, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say generally, folks aren't parking in front of your houses. You know, they're, they are probably filling the.
Not generally, not generally. When they're, I'm sorry, I'm Emily Kuga. I live at twenty-three. Not generally, but when there's an event going on, they're going to park wherever there's an open spot. So we do sometimes put out cones in front of our houses, which sometimes.
Oh, don't tell them that.
We're not going to, we're not going to beach up over that. I mean, I, I think it's.
Generally, we usually manage it okay. We'll put cones out there.
Yeah.
It feels perfectly appropriate, honestly, to.
That are there for events. They all see it and.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, is that I, we kind of manage, and you've heard me ramble on about this. But I, I, it can, yeah, it can get a little hairy, but then you gotta, you know, look in the mirror and say, "You bought a house in a park." That has events and fireworks. People are going to show up.
Right, right.
I've reached playground.
Someone are going to come to playgrounds. Okay.
Thank you for asking, Mom.
Thank you.
We wish we had. Right.
I, I don't know if this is appropriate, this, at this meeting, I'm there. We had talked earlier with, it was Matt that came out? The sidewalk, who's going to be maintaining the sidewalk and we were hoping that was going to be the city.
Yeah, Matt said the city.
Yeah, I think y'all just replace that.
Well, I'm giving it to you, yeah, it's.
Yeah, you all just, the, so this was a couple of years ago that they just replaced the sidewalk. It's brand new and I think that was definitely part of it. Any public sidewalk is our maintenance responsibility. So moving forward, if there's an issue with that, and I think partially because, hey, this, this thing is new. We'll, we're willing to accept maintenance responsibility of it. We're not going to be doing anything to it for quite some time probably.
Good, good.
And I guess the other question again, I'm not sure if there's a fence on the back of the property there. No one seems to know who owns that or maintains it or.
Is it behind your Lot three as well? I, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing most of, most of it is going to be on what is going to be now our property, but it looks like Lot five and the, the last two would probably have a piece of that. Would be the only two that would have, I guess, are you, is it not well maintained? Are you looking for it to be maintained or?
It, it's getting, it's showing some age and.
It's changed like it looks bad.
It's, it's rusty and all that type of thing. A lot of vegetation. No, it's not, it's not as sort of. It is important to be there because otherwise everybody's just going to sidetrack that and go through my yard, so.
You know, I'll say that, you know, if, if it's on adjacent to Lot three or Lot five, I would say that, that, that's your baby. You know, we're obviously, we don't have any authority to be there once this thing is through. You know, I think beyond that, it looks like it's all ours and if it needs maintenance, we'll maintain it. But I would say those portions adjacent to Lot three and Lot five, I would say that's, that's, you know, if this thing goes through, we're, we're not a part of that.
Where it kind of goes back down in those woods, so really, the first two houses, mine being one, is, we're the only one really affected. The rest of that fence goes into the woods.
It goes down to Lockwood, goes down to my side yard, so it's definitely.
Is that the fence?
Yes, it's an encroachment on the budding lot, the way it's drawn.
Well, yeah, it's not a normal Lot three or Lot five. It's according to this, it's on the lot behind there, the Williamson.
But that, I'm pretty sure that that fence was put in, like in the sixties for the fort. Okay, so I think it's an encroachment on the private property owner behind them, but technically it was the fort, so. Technically, I guess it was the city's at one point. So I don't know that where that leaves you, but hypothetically, if it was on your property, you would inherit the fence for lots, at least the lots three and five.
But, but it looks like.
If it's on your property, it looks like it's not on your property actually. It looks like it's on your neighbor's property.
Is that green, is that green dye? It's up the fence, the green line?
Yep.
So then if it's on the neighbor's line, now they responsible for it?
Yeah.
Well, no, not necessarily. They could tear it out if they wanted.
Well, sure, but, but I mean, anything they, they get done would be there.
They're responsible for whatever they want to do.
Basically, as it currently is drawn, your neighbor could take that fence out and if you want a fence, you'd have to put in your own fence. Or, or not, but. At least that's the way it's drawn.
Well, and if that's accurate, I mean, nothing that we're doing here.
Changes anything.
Makes anything change because we're not changing that rear property line or anything, so it is where it is.
I'm sorry. I know you've been working on this for two years. I'm Kate Cruzy sitting at the end of Lockwood. I had no idea what you guys want. Can you, in a nutshell, tell me what you're trying to accomplish?
Basically, we're following the directions of Matt Kramer, who's the city manager. Because in order to dissolve the HOA, which as Mr. Schneider has said, is, is granted and explained within our original HOA contract. But in the process of doing that, in the dissolving of the lines, it got very complicated.
Okay, so your goal was to just dissolve the HOA?
Correct.
And then?
Correct. And then that little triangular part that's in the back that we are donating to the city, according to Matt, also helps protect that area. And then, you probably know more about this than I do. It was when he brought it up to me, it's the first I ever heard of it. Some part of that area is actually owned by the Water District.
Yeah, there's big pipes that go up to the reservoir.
Well, I mean, even beyond the pipes. And he discovered that or someone discovered it in doing property searches. And so it protects the city of Fort Thomas by having that.
Yeah, essentially, I mean, we're not going to, essentially, we're not going to allow anybody to develop that area. Once it comes, you know, so you're not going to see another house back there. You know, the, the, the lots are relatively confined and they have a lot of restrictions on them. And the back portion of those lots is going to be contiguous with the city park. So we have no intentions of really doing anything back there other than, you know, if there was an appeal, maybe put a, extend a trail or something like that, but, but short of that, you're not going to have any development per se.
Yeah, I don't think that would be possible. Okay, thank you.
We want to keep it green, green space.
The deer love it.
Right.
I, I will say one thing and I, you probably can't see this, but at the end of Lockwood, the last lot is actually owned by the city of Covington.
Yep.
So that, they, that was bought by the, by Covington when they built the waterworks back in the eighteen nineties and they've held it ever since.
They, they moved along.
There was actually a pump station there when they built the fort.
Well, I don't know. They hired somebody and a crew would come in.
So that is the city of Covington, so they do have the ability. If they ultimately someday wanted to divest themselves of that lot, they could build, somebody could build a house there. But that's not in our purview right now.
Matt or someone think that by the, the city, you know, was giving the city that, that kind of impinged upon their ability to do any sort of developing in the future?
Well.
I remember something that when Matt was saying how it had multiple advantages to the city of Fort Thomas.
Yeah, nobody could, nobody would develop on the city's property. I, I was just talking to the budding lot that's over Covington.
And I, I think there's a lot of easements and on, it's not noted on here, but I think there's a lot of, because they had to buy it for maintenance, I think there's a lot of easements on it and it might be somewhat restrictive to even consider building on it, but we don't have that information in front of us. And, and that might be what Matt was referencing that, hey, really, nothing can be built here because of where all the utilities are and the easements associated. You can't put anything there anyway. Possibly. I, I don't want to speak a hundred percent of that, but.
It's something about it would prevent some people from Lockwood from combining things to Lockwood and then those that are but back from the avenue. Or Lockwood, you know, or Lockwood and then to the back of Lockwood and the back of the avenue where they're meet.
Something that got mentioned, so.
I mean, ultimately, somebody could buy all its property and combine it if the city didn't in that triangle, so that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
So the city owns that triangle?
They will.
That's the intent. That's the intent.
Oh, except for the portion that cuts it down.
Right. So it's lot 67.
Okay, just curious.
Can I ask one final question? It really has nothing to do with this portion. It has to do with maybe the start of this. If I may, you know, I believe in personal property rights, it's your six homeowner's decision to do whatever you choose to. And I'm supportive of whatever you all wanna do, that's fine. My question to you, though, is why do you, why do you feel that the dissolution of the HOA is more advantageous than to do this than to have the HOA? Which I just don't understand that.
We're tired of policing our neighbors.
Okay.
We're just tired of policing them. I don't know what, besides telling my neighbor they can't paint their house pink, I don't know enough about historical regulations to tell my neighbor what they can and can't do.
Or enforce them.
And I feel like that's why we've been in place ultimately. And to pay my neighbor $60 a month so they can tell me my grass is too long, you know what I mean?
Okay, more of this personal freedom, I guess, in some respect.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, this is a two-part issue, really. We got the zone change to deal with, too, right? And the zone change gets complicated because we often have a finding of fact that shows the things that changed in the area where the initial zoning was not appropriate. And can you tell us what the, what the new zone is and how it relates to the old?
So this, this zone is the same zone that is, because of the lot size, it's the same zone that is in between the area of Miller and Lonely. And that was the smallest zone that we had to dedicate. And the reason we did that was the lots were so small and we were trying to make it easier for those folks to make improvements on their houses without variances. So that's, that's the only one that this would fit into because of the scale, the, the, the scale of the lots that had to be made to create lot lines. And that, that's why we chose that designation. And it still doesn't quite meet, so we still have to go to the Board of Adjustment as a part of this process.
But that's something that the city and the homeowners have created. It's an issue that they create. It's not, I'm trying to think how we can word a finding of fact that shows that, you know, the community's developed in a certain area, a way that is different than the zoning originally intended it to. The only thing that's changed is they don't want to have the HOA. So instead of one big lot, they wanted to buy it into six small lots.
Right.
Which, you know, is really no, I'm just trying to think legally. You know, Tim, what I'm talking about, we need to have a justification for approving that zone change that is not something that was created by the people asking for the zone change.
Now, you're right.
And I'm looking in the new zoning ordinance to find, you know, the process for a zone change, and I'm not finding it. Can you help me with that?
You know, I don't have it in front of me.
Just I, I wanted to make sure whatever we did here was...
I think that wasn't changed. You know, I, I'm pretty confident. I can't tell you precisely where that's at. But I think the terminology there for...
Seems like there are three or four or five different reasons you can ask for a zone change.
Right.
One of them is the neighborhood's developed in a way differently than the comprehensive plan thought it was going to, so...
I think it was only two. Literally, I think it was two.
And what would be, what would be the other one then?
Let me see.
So let me ask you a question. Didn't the HOA in the back dissolve?
They never had one. You mean the back of the park?
Yeah, they never had one?
No, there's no HOA.
They weren't, they were, the new, the old houses that they renovated?
Right.
They never had one.
Never had an HOA. For some reason, I thought they did.
Does the other one, the other up front has one?
Green Street, Green Street.
Ninety-three, no, Jerry.
Why didn't we put you all together about it?
I think we were at one point...
Do you want me to go down and grab you?
We'll be changed from room.
My people are...
Would you mind sharing that? Yeah. Because we had to do, we were making sure that it's the story. We talked about why we're...
It's in the plan, so. Honestly, I'm not setting you on the new ordinance, just trying to see if she's gonna get one.
Remember when they came in? She was kind of chilling, you know, it's part of that.
That's the same era, so.
Which is why we're just six of them.
So on page 93, it gives the, it gives the reasons for asking for a zone change.
Page 93.
Yeah.
And it's that the existing zoning was inappropriate or there've been changes of an economic, physical, or social nature that more or less were not anticipated.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, well, that, that would seem to make sense then if, if they dissolved the HOA, then now we've got six buildings on one lot and that doesn't matter. Okay, I just wanna make sure, in case anybody, anybody doesn't like what we're doing.
Does anybody else have any more questions to the public? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion of the hearing, so if we have any additional questions, well, you know, I assume everybody that wanted to speak had an opportunity to do so. Thank you. Does anybody else have questions?
Thank you all. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Especially former neighbor. See you, Billy.
Yeah.
So do we need two motions, one to approve the, the plat here and one for the... Yeah, we got a bunch of contingencies on that.
Right.
I know Kevin has that last time all those.
Yeah, I broke down the contingencies, if you're so inclined. The utility references to be cleaned up. The minor modifications Tim noted in the historical context. The curb data that, on the front line there that Jerry mentioned. Obviously, removal of the preliminary note at that, at that time. The addition of the owner's certificates and the dedication certificate to create the ability for all owners to sign. The land hooks is noted on the city lot as well as the lot in front that needs to be modified. And the last item was what we want to do or how we want to address the ingress easement. Do, do we want to put, how we wanna reference that on the map?
I think you missed the owners, uh, the signatures.
I mentioned that, yes.
Oh, did you?
Okay, I was, I was, sorry about that.
I mean, do you, so do you, I guess for that ingress egress easement, do you intend to meet with them and define what that actually is?
Yeah, because my feeling is they either all agree to it and they execute an easement that's mutual to everybody and benefits everybody. Or if one of them says, "Hey, I don't wanna do that," then I don't think they're gonna have...
I guess my question is, does that have to happen first before we would approve the plat?
No, I, I, this doesn't, I mean, that easement really doesn't impact a subdivision of it. What about just removing...
But the plat itself, if that easement is on the plat.
Since there isn't one, I mean, what if we just remove the 30-foot ingress egress easement?
You could, as long as you have a reference to it on your deed, I guess that would be okay as long as there's a very detailed reference to it on the deed. You wouldn't necessarily have to have it on the plat. It'd be, I mean, if I lived there, I'd probably want it on the plat.
Yeah, I would, too. I would, too.
I definitely would.
I'd probably want it on there, but...
This is all contingent on all the variances that they need to get.
This is contingent on actually council ultimately approving this as well and all the variances.
Yeah.
Totally approve it or just recommending to council?
I mean, you're ultimately making a motion for approval.
Well, the plat approval isn't by council, though, right?
Well, you're right. I'm sorry, the plat approval is by you, but the, the ultimate approval for this project, for the zone change, is to council.
I guess what I'm wondering is can we, can we, can we recommend the zone change but not approve the plat tonight?
And bring the plat back next month?
Bring the plat back next month with the, with the modifications.
That's right, because it's gonna take two months anyways.
I think so. There's gonna be some time that's needed. And I think that we could continue the meeting so we don't have to re-advertise. I'm not sure if we'd have to, I'd have to look at the technicalities of re-advertising. But if you'd like us to...
We don't have to advertise for a plat approval.
Right, exactly.
What's a subdivision? Like, do you have to advertise for a subdivision?
Yeah, I'd say we would.
Well, then let's...
We just continue it.
Let's table it to...
Table that portion of it?
Yeah.
And then, but if you're okay with the zone change, move forward with that portion of it?
Yeah, I, I think we're, I think we're okay with the zone change.
Sure, sure, that's...
All right, well, I'm gonna move to table the subdivision of the lots until our, our next meeting.
So we can address the issues and essentially the easement is, mainly the easement, the other things it sounds like we're in agreement to. But just getting those on one document and cleaning it up so we're not dancing around.
Yes.
I'll second that.
But, so that's one motion.
Yeah, we'll handle the zoning.
So we have a motion to table approval of the subdivision plat for Pearson Street. And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the zone change to City Council. And based on, in conformance with section 1.8.02 of the Fort Thomas Unified Development Ordinance, section B1, no, B2, that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area involved, which really comes down to the HOA having been, or being eliminated, which means that we have six houses on one lot. We have to deal with having six houses on one lot. And the development plan for, for creating those lots is really the best way to handle that. And the, and the lot, the zone change being that that zone is the one that would put these lots most in conformance with, with the zoning. Well, we want to find a fact in there, so...
No, I'll second that.
That's a good motion, right? I'll second your motion.
You're the third.
All of us do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He did it first.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just...
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the, the zone change from R1C to RT, or, yeah, R1TC1 for the affected lots on Pearson Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess my biggest concern for them is that, is that when the city gets this lot, that we make sure that that cannot be developed.
Oh, well, and that was my intention, to add the land hooks.
Yeah.
So if it is at some point redeveloped, it would have to be a very deliberate act. And it would have to have, you know, a meeting of this board
Right.
to essentially create a new lot there. I don't think it's, it would be ever the intention to do that.
Yeah, because I think that's what Lockwood is probably worried about.
Yeah, and that, that's why I wanted those land hooks on there that they did.
Nothing's gonna happen with those water transmission lines unless the waterworks goes out at some point.
Yeah, I've seen it back there.
Need to do our regular meeting then?
Do we need to approve the minutes for, oh, yeah. So I would motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
A motion, a second to close the public hearing and table it until the next regular scheduled planning session. Aye. Everybody.
Aye.
Thank you. Roll call. And I don't think we have, is what, approval minutes in January?
I've gone through the minutes. I moved to approve the minutes as drafted.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the January 2025 Planning Commission meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we're...
Kevin, do you have anything before we adjourn?
Nope.
I have one, but I have a question. Could you just really broadly tell us what was adopted in this ordinance and what wasn't adopted in the ordinance from the three years of hacking we did over this?
So the, the two big things that ultimately were not was the overlay along the spine. The other thing that, and I'll be honest, I don't know where you ended up with it. The murals were not put in there either, I don't think. Those were the two, I think, that, if I'm not mistaken, the council ultimately kind of... Yeah, yeah. And I think they got enough feedback from the, the folks on the spine that they wanted to revisit it at some point in the future. It wasn't that they disagreed with it necessarily, but did they want, do they want to consider modifications to it? And, you know, since this is a living, breathing document, there's no rush to, to do it right now if there was that many people, in their eyes, I don't know how many people, but enough people that swayed them from, from voting for that portion of it. So, yes, we're actually getting into it now, marks enforcement stuff and finding a few little, you know, minor mistakes, you know, which were expected, they, they happen. Had, you know, a few questions here and here, here and there for Alisa. And, you know, we've actually had a prospective person that wants to modify one of their properties, possibly modify one of their properties in a business district. And it's, it's kind of interesting to go through the processes and like, okay, you can do this now there. And you could never do that before and you can, but you have these regulations. We put the regulations, this property's down on Alexander Pike Mixed Juice District. And they're just looking at options and, well, you have developmental controls. If you do decide to change the building in any way, or, you know, there's, there's the facade changes and things of that nature that need to be considered. So it's, it's gonna be interesting as we dig into it, and it already has been. But I think for the good.
We got some heat that we were supposed to do this every five years, and it'd been like eight or so. We have the same issue with the comp plan. Has anyone talked about doing anything with the comp plan?
We have, so we, we wanted to breathe through Christmas. And we have a meeting next week with CT to develop a plan. I don't know if we'll be coming back next month with anything at that point. I would say that's a little premature. I guess depends on what comes out of the meeting. I think that there, there is some, some folks that want more changes than, I don't wanna say what we're willing to do, I wouldn't go that far, but there's some folks that want a lot of changes to it. We invested a lot of time and effort into that document. And I don't know that, at least my personal opinion, that we need to do a total revamp of it. I'd rather do more of a, hit some points that meet the needs.
Another three years on it.
Right.
So I saw that, I saw that Matt said that you guys might develop like an RFP and put it out on the street or somebody, do that potentially.
I...
CT, but somebody else.
I did not hear that.
I said it, the council made it.
Okay, well, I, I, I guess we'll have that meeting next week and determine what we're gonna do. I wasn't privy to that. I didn't hear that one. I admit, I missed it.
And then the other thing I was gonna say, you know, I said you had an email today about the setup at 110, about the short-term rentals.
I called Matt and talked to him about it today.
Yeah, I guess would there be any benefit, like to the, the PC passing a resolution saying we do not support that?
Well, because we got something very similar to that last night on another matter. And had to do with the occupational taxes. The, and so I talked to my law partner, Fessler, who's city attorney in Bellevue. And they did not pass a resolution, but they had him send a letter to Chili, Funky, Pro Meyer. The, and, and so I talked to Matt about it. I think he's gonna chew on it a little bit and give me some feedback. Because I agree with you.
So many, it basically takes away the local regulatory authority to do anything about it.
Right.
So anyway, there was a, there was a draft bill that was filed, called Set Bill 110, that essentially would remove local jurisdiction over short-term rentals. So you couldn't zone or regulate them. And so, huh.
That's terrible.
That leaves the cities and, yeah.
Right.
You know, that kind of house the, out the door, so.
Right.
Anyway.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Say aye to that real quick.